Can you hear the background noise from the shop?
I can't.
Okay. They're putting the new tires on the street sweeper with an impact wrench. It's kind of noisy.
We have a challenge today. Leslie set the meeting for one hour. 3:30 to 4:30.
Yay.
She obviously knows something we don't know, but... I'm sure we can do it.
Will the video expire if we go over an hour?
Who are you talking to?
I think she was asking Leslie, "We will be fine if we go over an hour."
Oh, sure.
Well, it's 3:30, guys. Should we get started?
Yep.
Okay. Have we got... Is it Leslie or who's going to be calling the roll?
Leslie.
I'm here. I was muted.
Hi, Leslie.
Hi.
Then we're called to order, and would you do a roll call for us?
There are Burling.
Here.
Michael Cadell.
Here.
Darlene Mosley.
Here.
J.C. Myers. I see him, but I think he's muted.
Okay.
And Brian Sowers.
Here.
Okay, we're all here. And just a reminder to mute yourself when you're not speaking. Thank you.
I was here, yep.
Thank you. Well, first, I want to introduce Brian Sowers. I don't know him. He is our new Forest and Beach Commissioner, taking Al Seroy in spot. So Brian, would you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. So I've owned, or my family's owned, and I've owned a property in Carmel for about 50 years. I recently moved down here from the Bay Area, well, recently, in the last four years. Graduated Carmel High School. My parents used to own the Seavac Tennis and Fitness Club out in Carmel Valley a long, long time ago.
Sure.
Other than that, was definitely interested in getting involved in city government a little bit and contribute some time, as I'm a consultant kind of on the verge of retiring. That's my best overview.
You're on mute, Mike.
We have an item on the agenda for the Brown Act training video. I wonder, have any of you did it with me? We did it last week, but Bob, do you need to comment on that?
Yeah, just really quick, we're coming to the pocket. Some of you were on mute. We're getting real bad feedback from somebody. Maybe if we put our phones on mute, if you're not speaking, that might really help. Anyway, there was a Brown Act training last week. Some of you, the commissioners, were on it, some were not. So if you were not able to be on the training last week, it's on a YouTube video. You'll be able to see it at your leisure. It's about 90 minutes long and highly recommended, even for people who have been on the commission for some time. It was a good refresher for me, and I've been in this for many years. So that's all I had on that one.
This is the part of the agenda where members of the public are able to make appearances and speak on matters of municipal concern that are not on today's agenda. Each person's comments shall be limited to three minutes. And matters not appearing on the commission's agenda will not receive action at this meeting, but may be referred to staff for a future meeting. You're not required to give your name, but it is helpful if you do so, so that we can be identified, you can be identified in the minutes of the meeting. So do we have anyone who wishes to make a public appearance? Okay.
Hello?
Hello? Yes. Sorry. Didn't mean to cut you off. Who's that?
This is Dale Byrne.
Okay, Dale. Go ahead.
I know that Shirley Moon also wanted to speak. She might be having trouble doing the Star Six. So if she's listening, that's how you get on, Shirley. I don't think she's done this before. Shirley, you want to go first?
Sure.
Okay.
Hi, this is Shirley Moon, and I wanted to talk about our new Carmel Cares program that we've started up about two weeks ago. We have organized a group of people who go out and pick up trash on the scenic pathway every single day of the week. So they basically walk it one way and then come back the other way, so it's walked twice. And Carmel Cares has provided them with a two-gallon bucket disposable gloves, a trash grabber, and a Carmel Cares t-shirt. And after two weeks, it seems to be working very well, and the path seems cleaner than ever. And we had two goals in mind. One was to keep the pathway pristine. And secondly, to hopefully change people's behaviors, so that when they're aware of the pristine environment, they might make more of an effort to help keep it clean. So I just want you to know that this is a new group. It's called the Scenic Pathway Pickup Posse. And we hope to expand to four other areas in the city. Thank you.
We're both on mute. Mute, Mike.
Sorry, sorry. Pretty soon, at this rate, they're going to work you out of a job. Okay. And then Dale Byrne, you wanted to say something, make a public appearance?
Yes. Sorry that we have two Carmel Cares people in a row, but I did present to you, I believe, last month, and thank you for that opportunity. I enjoyed that. During that presentation, I mentioned that we're involved in producing voice map audio tours, which are GS-triggered. I'm happy to say that we just officially released our next one, which is, it's called Historical Highlights from the Mission Area, but it includes Mission Ranch, the Basilica. But the exciting thing is it also takes visitors on a walk through the Mission Trail Nature Preserve, talks about the history of it, talks about the flora, the fauna. And it walks them completely around. It actually has an optional trip up to Flanders. It explains all of that, and then walks them back out to the park. It also tells them to be mindful when they're in Carmel, tells them the whole history of Carmel and how we got started. We're also very close to releasing Carmel the Big Sur, which is a driving tour, completely different thing for us. It was a learning experience. But it's got four really good hikes. It takes you through the low boasts as an option. And we're also going to release Carmel to Santa Cruz, driving tour. So all of these things really talk a lot about Carmel and mindfulness and the kinds of things that you want people to do while they're visiting. So and if any of you would like to take it, if Carmel Cares wants it, email. I could give you a code that you could try it out. They sell for $4.99, 25% of the revenue, which is half, we only get half the revenue to begin with. My partner gets 25%. The other 25% is going to go to Carmel Cares to fund our project, which is nice. So that's it. Thank you.
You're on mute, Mike.
Thank you, Dale. That sounds great. As a lawyer, I have to ask a question. The Carmel the Big Sur, this is something that people are fiddling with while they're driving down the coast?
No, you just get it started. Most people have audio with their phone. The phone is offline. You don't have to have a cell signal, otherwise it wouldn't work down at Big Sur.
Right, right.
If you're listening, you don't have to touch anything while you're doing it.
Okay.
When you get to a point, it tells you turn off. You're going to see a sign up ahead, turn off, and then, but you never touch the screen the whole time you're actually using it.
Okay, good. Okay. Well, thank you very much. That's great. Any comments? Okay, thank you. So now we're at announcements. Do any members of the commission have any announcements to make? Okay, the consent agenda. We have two items. The first one is approval of the December 10th, 2020 meeting minutes as presented. Are there any proposed amendments or corrections to the minutes for the December 10th meeting? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Did you want to take both of them in one motion, or you could certainly break it up into two motions? You have two items on the consent.
Right. Yeah, I was going to break it up into two items.
Perfectly fine. Go ahead.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the minutes of the December 10th meeting?
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
One second, though. One second.
Okay. And Leslie, would you poll the commission?
Yes. Burling.
Yes.
Cadell.
Yes.
Mosley. Myers.
Hi.
Sowers.
All abstained, so I wasn't in the meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah. And the second item is the scenic pathway renovation effort by Carmel Cares. Now, I'm not sure what exactly is it that we're voting on here, Bob?
Just to receive it, there's no action early. We got this at the end of the year, last year from Carmel, from Shirley and Dale. They're doing a great job. They're even in track of, they're progressing. They had this cool article, write photo, point after photo. I figured I'd throw it in the packet, so that all the commissioners are aware of what's going on. It's just to receive it, the only action early.
Okay, perfect. Is there a motion to receive the renovation efforts from Carmel Cares with respect to the scenic pathway?
I'll make that motion.
Sarah, second?
I'll second it.
Okay. And Leslie, could you poll the commission?
Burling.
Yes.
Cadell.
Yes.
Mosley. Myers.
Hi.
Sowers.
Abstained.
Thank you.
Okay. We now have public hearings on two matters. First is the approval or denial, with or without conditions, for lifting the stop-work order at the northwest corner of Uniporo and 13th Avenue. In addition to a presentation from the City Forester, I'm sure everyone's already been a couple of letters on this, or at least one. So with that, I'll bring it over to the City Forester for a presentation.
Hi, everyone. So this matter was discovered by our building official on a routine inspection of an electrical panel at the northwest corner of Uniporo and 13th. While he was there doing the inspection, he had witnessed some tree stumps being excavated in the backyard, contacted me about whether or not there was a permit for those removals, and there were not. So the building official did issue a stop-work order for the work. Per city code, it is required to have a permit for the removal of trees that are over 10 inches in diameter. So these trees, even though they're not on our most desirous species list, did meet the threshold of requiring a permit. So it is my recommendation that since there was not a permit associated with these removals, that we charge payment for the appraised value of the three pittus form trees that were removed. And the appraised value is $6,300, as well to be deposited into the reforestation fund. In addition to reimbursing the city for the cost of the appraisal, which we now have as $1,103.40. I would also like you to consider requiring replanting of trees on the site and putting together a forest management plan for the parcel, as well as submit a landscape design that can be approved to meet the city guidelines of being drought tolerant and mostly native. So with that, I would like to show you some quick photos that were in the packet that you have seen already. Go. So there's the location, of course, at the intersection. And this is what the site looked like when I arrived. You can see that there are three trees that clearly had been cut down, and now the stumps are being excavated by hand. Again, here's evidence of the debris that was generated, as well as the measurements of the diameter of the trees confirming that they were over 10 inches in diameter and would require a permit. Also following that is the appraisal from West Coast Arboris with the amount, appraised value for the trees. The perimeter of the parcel does have several oaks on the exterior, around the 13th side in the right-of-way. And then in the front part of the parcel, the right-of-way is very large. And in that case, there is only two oaks in the front yard. There is one oak in the back. There's one oak in the backyard and what I believe to be a small fir. It looks to be that there could be room for two upper canopy trees in the back, but there's not a lot of room in the front setback for additional trees. However, there is room for an underplanting in the right-of-way along Uniporo. So with that, does anyone have any questions?
Sarah, Mike Cadell. Just a question. The homeowners have written a letter to the commission explaining, or at least saying that they're... This was an innocent decision on their part. They were not aware. Do you have anything that suggests that is true or untrue?
I do not. When we were on-site issuing the stop-work order, there were two individuals who I perceived to be in the appointment of the property owner, who were excavating the stumps out by hand. At the time, they were unable to identify a licensed tree service doing the work. So they weren't affiliated with the business that we approved, that I'm aware of. Also, there were no vehicles present that had any markings indicating any sort of business or landscape company was doing the work.
Okay, okay.
So with that taken into account, the people doing the work wouldn't, may not have had known that a permit was required and counseled their customers to get a permit.
Right, right. Okay, any other questions from the commissioner?
I have a question. I have a couple of questions. So the homeowners say that they were unaware of the situation and what they needed to do. And I'm wondering, were they the actual ones that cut those trees down? I live pretty close to that property, and it's been under renovation for several months now. I mean, could even be a year, as far as I know. And several different, you know, it seemed like there were groups of people living in there while they were renovating, and then they would move out. And some of them had kids, and they'd stay for the weekends, and they'd be playing in the backyard. And I'm wondering, who took those trees out? Were they out before the new homeowners purchased the property? Or did they then purchase the property and take the trees out, unknowing that they weren't supposed to?
Having watched the site, there was a previous owner who did some renovation work inside the structure. I know this because at one point, they needed approval to do some excavation to install a new water line. So those individuals do not match the new owners, Ms. Price and Ms. Davis. So is my understanding that Ms. Price and Ms. Davis purchased the property, and then they were the ones that hired the work for the trees to be removed? So it was my perception that the work definitely happened after the change of hands of the property.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, the applicant wrote a letter, the property owner wrote a letter that's in your packet, or I guess, Leslie, I forwarded to you. And if you read the letter, they admit to having the trees removed, and they, you know, they discussed that there was an innocent mistake and that they fully wish to cooperate with the commission to do whatever's necessary to make the city whole.
Right. Commissioner Rosley, did you have anything else? If not, I'm going to go to J.C. Myers.
Excuse me. This is Vivian Price. Is there a chance I could say something?
Yes, but let us finish with the City Forester first, and then we will turn to the homeowners, okay?
Right, sure.
Don't worry, you'll have an opportunity. Okay, so I think, J.C.?
Thanks. Sarah, in Figure Six, the trunk measurement that I'm looking at, it looks, it appears to be under 10 inches. Is that correct?
Let me check. Figure Six was right. I apologize for it being blurry. It was, at the widest point, it was 9.75 inches. So it was right up to the cusp.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the City Forester? Okay, can we hear from the homeowners then?
Thank you so much. We really appreciate the ability to speak at your council meeting, I mean, at your Forester Commission meeting. It's a little unnerving to be doing this without seeing you. I'm on my phone. But at any rate, we purchased the house. The escrow closed in October. And we, you know, the place in the back, it had a large, two large plastic grass mats laid across the entirety of the back. And then, you know, there were these three trees. And we, you know, we wanted to beautify the place. We've... We're doing a lot of work inside, and, you know, we came to Carmel, as we like the beauty, it's the nature. We love the oak trees and the redwoods that, you know, we see, and the pine trees and the cedar. What we'd like to do, and we had no idea, we, you know, I don't know, I wish we had known about the permit. Of course, we would have requested one and paid for it. You know, we have owned homes in the past. As you can see, we came here because of about COVID and due to our immune compromise issues. So what we plan to do is, we're working with a licensed landscaper now, Aguiar Landscaping. And we'd like, we're planning to do a variety of trees. What we're thinking about is Catalina Ironwood, the Ray Hartman Sienosis, and possibly some redwood. We've got some plants picked out, flannel bush, Sienosis, Menzanitas, the Snapdragon, buckwheat, coffee berry, autumn sage, lemonade berry, and mallow. You know, we have to see where the right places are to plant these, depending on, you know, the sunlight and shade. And, you know, we're hoping to be part of the Carmel community and make this an attractive house. We've been told that it has been run down, which it is, for many years. And we think it's a beautiful location. You know, the oak trees, as Sarah's pointed out, around its perimeter are just gorgeous. And we plant, we're in the process of fixing the house up and landscaping the back. Of course, we have to wait until we get approval. So, you know, again, we want to be good citizens. We did not understand about the permits. These were not native plants, native trees. We would never have cut down any native trees. So, but we're, you know, asking you to consider the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. And for our minutes, who has been speaking?
Dr. Vivian Price.
Okay. And Dr. Price, the recommendation, one of the recommendations before us is that any plantings be approved, and I'm talking about trees, not this general landscape, but any new trees, replacement trees, be planted with the approval and coordination with the City Forester. Would you have a problem with that?
No, in fact, I've talked to Sarah, and she's indicated that she will work with me and my wife to, you know, approve the trees, that, you know, review the trees that we choose, and when they're right, approve them.
Well, I think Sarah has taken us, since she's been with us the last, I guess, now two years almost, just still one year. Okay, just seems like longer. She's taken us in a very good direction, so I think she's, she'll be great to work with. Any other questions from the commission for Dr. Price? J.C.?
Thank you. Dr. Price, you had mentioned that you are now working with a licensed landscaper. How is it that you went about finding someone to do the work prior to the stop-work order?
Basically, we went to the nursery and asked if they had any suggestions of somebody who we could hire. And they gave us a name.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question. So you're working with a licensed lands, this is a question to Dr. Price. You're working with a licensed landscaper now, and you've picked out some plants. Do you have an actual landscape plan? Are you planning to have an actual plan that you can then?
Right. Yes, we have a site plan, and we're in the talking stage. We're talking to the landscaper about what we would like to see done, and he will be submitting the permit. I mean, we have to get a permit. Is that right? Or, yeah?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Price? Okay, thank you, Dr. Price.
Thank you.
Now, is there anyone, any member of the public that wishes to be heard on this matter? We'll throw it open for that. Okay, closed then, and now it's open for discussion at the commission. Anyone?
I have something I'd like to say with Sarah.
Hey, Sarah.
So there, I'm surprised... So there, I'm surprised, Sarah Davis, that you said there was only two oak trees in the front because it looks like a lot more than that. It's actually a very tree-y sort of section there where the two streets meet. The people who lived there before were the children, they, they did own that, but they only stayed a short time. The, to me, you know, I totally believe them that they didn't know to cut, that they couldn't cut the trees down. Every place I've lived, except Carmel, you can, and actually, we can in our little section, but you can, it's the only place I know of that you have to get that permission and, and we do it with good reason. So to me, to me, they're going about it the right way at this point, getting a bona fide planner and then a landscape planner and then working with Sarah on it. So I think we should just go ahead with what Sarah has suggested in terms of the cost and, and assume they'll do a very nice job.
And I think you mean by that, Commissioner Burling, that we should accept the City Forester's recommendation?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, okay, now Sarah.
And, and the cost that she had mentioned, I, I'm, unfortunately, my computer is not working, so I don't, I can't look at what she said for the cost, but that was, but I was thinking too.
Okay, okay. Commissioner, I'm sorry, City Forester, Sarah?
Just a point of clarification, in the front setback, there are two private property oaks. The balance of the trees in front of the house actually are on public right-of-way.
Okay, okay.
And the total amount with the appraised value of the trees and the cost of the appraisal would be $7,403.40.
Seven oh three.
Hello?
Yes, yes, Dr. Price.
I, I'm sorry to interject this, but I, I understand that there's a, a cost for the appraisal. These were non-native trees. They were growing into the? They were growing into the, and we know, we, we don't have pictures, so I can't show them to you. I, I, I find it difficult, you know, the 6,300, if you look at the, I mean, I, I understand the value of nature, but these, you know, these were basically invasive trees. And I, you know, to, to pay $6,300 for invasive trees seems counterintuitive. I don't mind paying the appraisal because that's a real cost and it's, it's a punitive value of over $1,000, but I can see where you don't expend any funds on, you know, on this case, but, but charging us $6,300 for an invasive tree seems, again, counterintuitive. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, returning to the commission again, further comments?
I have a comment. In, in regards to the one trunk that is under, coming in under the diameter equal to or greater than 10 inches, I just want to confirm that again with you, Sarah, Forester Sarah, just in reviewing the municipal code, just to make sure that in assessing any penalties here, that perhaps this one particular tree might be removed from the assessment being that it's under the diameter. Sarah, comments? And, and then of course, to the commission in terms of your thoughts there?
Yeah, ultimately, the diameter of the tree was determined from my blurry photo to the consultant. That's the short diameter. The, the other one still comes in under that 10-inch threshold per the ordinance. So with that being said, the appraised value for that one tree would be $1,600.
Got it, thanks. So just in terms of discussion within the commission, and I, I would lean more towards a assessment on penalties. You know, I'm, I'm not here to think that, you know, we want to punish people per se, but ignorance doesn't really allow for, if everybody came to town and bought a house and cut their trees down and said they were sorry, we would be a town without trees. So I think it's important that we have rules in place and we should follow them and enforce them. And in this particular instance, it looks to me like we could remove one of the trees in the assessment piece, just my thoughts.
Okay, okay. Anyone else?
This is Brian. Yeah, hi. Hey, just, you know, since I am a new commissioner, I'm not, I've gone through a lot of minutes and looked at a lot of things that have gone over the city with regards to issues around people cutting trees without permits and doing things that have damaged trees. And, you know, I guess from my view as a commissioner, I would want to make sure that following, you know, some precedent here on what we've typically done as, you know, forest commissioners in, in regards to penalties and following that precedent as best we can. Again, every situation is a little different than the other. I think I'm kind of more in, in agreement with J.C. Myers on this, I guess. My point would be if the property owner bona fide landscape plan and they're willing to put in, in consultation with Sarah, trees of a nature or magnitude where those trees, I mean, at least the ones that were taken out, were fairly significant. And I know some, when we replant trees, 15-gallon tree in there, that's going to take 20 years before it has any substance to it. If the homeowner was willing to maybe spend part of this penalty for trees that were of significance, that were in agreement with the city, I would think that money would go better used to actually enhancing the backyard property with trees that were replacing the ones that were taken out. Obviously, I think the appraisal, the appraisal or, has got to be paid for and whether there's some other penalty that goes on that they're taking the trees out just because of, you know, that's just the way it is when you do something out of permit. And then put the remainder of the funds into their existing landscape plan, replacing more robust trees than what you would typically maybe plant in a landscape plan.
Makes sense. I think, you know, Brian, in response to your initial question, I do think we have struggled over the last couple of years because we've had several instances of particularly egregious situations where contractors or homeowners have, you know, even with a permit or without a permit, have taken out trees and done so in a very injurious fashion and, and, and people that should have known better. And, you know, people, professionals who had done it before and that sort of thing. And so I do think that we have struggled, but I think we've got a pretty good template now for how to assess value and, but I think your point's a good one, I think J.C.'s point is, is a good one. And I think there may be some middle ground, but I like your point. I would rather have a, a larger tree planted than simply put money into the coffers of the city if, if there's a way to do that. And, and I, I mean, I'm sorry, City Forester, Sarah, if you'd want to comment on that?
Yes, if you want to think about that, any appraisals, each appraisal includes a replacement cost. So in this case, each of the appraisals have $250 for the price of a tree and $600 for aftercare for one year of establishment for the tree. So the, the replacement cost in each of the appraisals is $850.
But Sarah, if we, if we made as a condition of lifting the stop work order that the trees planted, the replacement trees, be of a value greater than $250, would, would, one, would that be effective? And two, would it make sense then that they could measure that against the penalty, the, the replacement value, the rest of the replacement value, so that we could diminish some of the amount that they would pay? And they get a bigger tree? I mean, that's, that would be good for the homeowner.
Yeah, that, that's up to you. I base this replacement installation value on the 15-gallon or two-foot box tree size per some of the other documents, so our replacement permits and that sort of thing. So that's why that value is set there. So if you want to take the proposed, the approach you're, you're discussing, that's, that's up to the commission.
Commissioner Meyer?
Thanks. I, I would really stand opposed to this as a method in, in going forward. I think that we have discussed at length over many different meetings, the notion of planting bigger, maybe perhaps we, we, we want to believe be more significant trees. And I think we've heard the forester weigh in on numerous occasions, as well as others in the community that are experts in this field, that really planting a, a more significant tree doesn't necessarily guarantee longevity. In fact, perhaps can be a deterrent to its true longstanding life. I think we should stick with our, our policies and enforce it as we would have any other time. And again, I think we should weigh in and consider removing one of the trees, that's it.
Good points. Commissioner Mosley, did you?
Yeah, I, I have a lot of questions, but first of all, the doctor, I'm sorry, was it Price?
Price, Price.
Yes, they're in the process of really adding something to our community. A lot of the times we're faced with, like you say, developers or builders or just homeowners that want to move their building envelope to the nth degree and end up killing trees for the, for the purpose of having a larger home, let's say. This home is going to sit the way it is. It's on a very large lot. It's got a lot of trees on it already. It seems to me that the homeowners have a real commitment to making it more beautiful and that's going to cost some money. They've already got a licensed contractor, they're already working on the plants that they would like to plant. They have agreed that they're going to get the landscape plan approved and play by the rules. And so I can see, you know, they made a mistake, they, they, we, we as a city had to go and get an appraisal done and come up with what all these costs would be, but I'm going to guess what they're going to put in, in replacement of those three pittus forums is going to be far more expensive and end up looking far more beautiful as an end result. And so it's kind of hard for me to be punitive when our idea was not to, you know, tear out a tree so they could get 50 extra square foot of housing. And so I'd like to be lenient, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yeah. Public Works Director Herrari?
Yes, just a quick, Commissioner Mosley used the word punitive. I wanted to be clear that the question of punitive damages, whether or not that could be assessed by the commission is something that has been, it's in the legal realm at this point. Or the, the value of the trees that were assessed can be assessed as a, as a fine or, but I, please don't use the term punitive because that's, that takes on a different meaning obviously. Thanks.
Yeah. And, and we have, you know, we've tried, I think it's important, I think this is part of what Director Herrari is saying, is we, we have tried to develop some consistency in how we approach these situations. And there's no question that some are more extreme or egregious than others, but this is, you know, people did come in and cut down three significant trees, although you could argue about one if, since it's a little under 10 inches. And the fact that they were pittus forum, I agree, it would be a lot worse if they were redwoods or oak or Monterey pine, but it's, it still violates our city regulations. So.
And really, Mike, when, when you're saying worse, it just really would be that the value of the tree would be different.
True, that's true, that's right. Okay, any further discussion? Does somebody have a motion they'd like to make?
Well, I'd like to make, I'd like to make that motion. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the forester's recommendation with the caveat of removing the tree in question under 10-inch diameter.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion?
Could you say it again? I couldn't understand it on the phone.
Yeah, Sarah, let me state it and, and let me know if you can't hear this. The motion is that we accept the City Forester's recommendation with the modification that the tree that is a little less than 10 inches be removed from the calculation.
Okay, uh-huh. Thank you.
And do we have a second first before we?
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a second, and then there's a comment. Our City Forester wants to make a comment or, go ahead, Sarah.
Yes, in the, in the recommendation, I asked to consider requiring replanting, preparing a management plan and/or a landscape plan for the property. Would you like to add a definitive requirement for either any of those or all of those items?
Well, it's, it's replacement, a landscape plan, and what was the third?
And/or a landscape plan for the property. So tree, new trees, a management plan, and a landscape plan.
Okay, I, I think, yes, so let me, I would suggest that as a friendly amendment to Commissioner Myers, who would need to approve that. And so the, the revised motion, if you accept that friendly amendment, would be to accept the City Forester's recommendation, but exclude from the calculation of value the tree that was under 10 inches, but do require replanting of three trees, a management plan, and a landscape plan to be subject to the approval of the City Forester.
I'll accept that friendly amendment.
Okay, and Commissioner Burling, you seconded?
Yeah, that's fine.
You, okay, good.
That's fine.
All right, is there any further discussion? Does anyone else want to make a comment before we vote on the motion?
Yes, I do. This is Dr. Price.
Okay, Dr. Price, sorry, but at this point, this is really just the commission and we did earlier let you speak while we were in commission, but, but at this point, it's, it's really just for the commissioners, okay?
And Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could relay a quick message to Dr. Price, we'll be in touch with her tomorrow or next week or so about the options she will have to appeal to the city council.
Right. Okay. Any other comments from, or any further discussion from the commission? Okay, Ms. Fenton, could you poll the commissioners?
Yes. Burling? Yes. Kedow?
Yes.
Mosley?
Yes.
Myers?
Myers.
Sowers?
No.
It passes four to one, thank you.
Okay. Next item is the approval or denial with or without conditions of the tree removal permit application of 28 trees on 16 parcels, South First Avenue between Carpenter Street and Guadalupe Street. This is for the new mixed-use. So I think the City Forester has a presentation on this. Commissioner, I mean, Forester Davis?
Yes, so in the spring, a concept plan for the redevelopment of 16 parcels between First and Second, Guadalupe and Carpenter was submitted to the city. At that point, myself and planning reviewed the initial concept plan and had some concerns about where the structures would be placed around the trees that were assessed during, during an initial site assessment. Since then, we've asked them to rearrange some of the structures to be able to accommodate the root protection zones for a very significant redwood on the interior of the parcel. So let me show you the location of what we're dealing with right now. So we are looking at this area here. So the 16 parcels are north of these four here. And let me turn on the satellite view. So you can see that there are numerous trees on the parcel as well as the right-of-way. This area of town, if you zoom out a little bit, doesn't have quite as robust a tree canopy as some other parts of town. So the trees that are on these 16 parcels do play a significant role in the neighborhood. So in my recommendation, I've talked about each tree as a number. And there would be three different categories, well, four different categories that the trees would fall into. First would be trees that are not on the application, that have gone into decline and need to be removed since they were initially assessed back in April. There are trees proposed to be removed that are not significant in terms of our definition per our worksheet that we use for site assessment. There are trees that even though might be smaller or undesirable species are exceptional examples of their species and are recommended to deny removal. And then there's more trees that are to remain. So, so let me show you the map. You should all have this in your packet. All right. So of those 16 parcels, eight of them are proposed to be merged into this section here that's furthest to the east. That would be a 14-unit luxury hotel and spa. The section that is shaded is...
Sarah, we don't see your map. We see the area.
Oh, sorry. Let me switch. Thank you so much. All right. Now, do you see something?
Not yet. Just a white screen. White screen.
We will reshare.
Okay.
Thank you for letting me know.
That's it.
Here you go.
So on the east side of the property, the eight parcels here would be merged into that resort and spa, including a parking lot. And the remaining portion of the block, essentially eight parcels, would turn into a single-family homes. So on the map, I've identified four green circles, and these are trees that are in advanced decline and should be removed regardless of any development of the parcel. They're dead, dying, diseased. They should come out sooner than later. The trees that are in yellow, that have no halo of any color around them, those are on the application for removal that aren't rated as significant per the worksheet prescribed in city code. So those are trees that we would allow to be removed. The trees that have a circle in red are trees that are on the application for removal. However, they're significant or unique in some way to the properties. And I'd like to point out, the ones in the single-family area that are circled in red, currently, none of those would interfere with the construction of any of the structures as they're proposed. So their retention would add value to the already low canopy of that immediate vicinity. So that would ensure the appearance of, of that block into the future if the homes are constructed. The one exception is tree number 34, which is a very nice redwood. In that case, the structure would only be, need to be adjusted by maybe three to four feet to accommodate the structural root zone. So that's what we're looking at. I know Commissioner Mosley had a chance to visit the site. If, did anyone else have a chance to visit the site? If not, I can show some photos. All right. Let me move to showing some photos for you. Stop. Stop presenting. And let me get another window up for you. Right here.
This is, Mike, this is, can I address the forester?
Yeah, sure, of course.
So as we can see from this map, this is a very sizable piece of property here we're talking about. And I think, I think it's fine to go through some pictures. But I mean, if you haven't been to the site, I went up there today. I mean, it's, it's got a lot going on in it. And I, I think, you know, to not visit the site, I mean, it'd really be hard to make any kind of decision on this, in this meeting, without touring the property. I don't think it would be fair to the city, nor the, the property owner, to not have our entire commission take a look at that site. I think Sarah's done a reputable plan with this. But, you know, I went and looked around at all the different trees that are there and kind of sized the neighborhood and this or that. And I think there's quite a bit of work that would need to be done or to be thought through on this. And, and again, I don't know how, you know, the, the existing trees around, the trees that would be presented as a part to the planning commission as a part of, you know, the whole development side of it. I'd hate to see us spend a lot of time on this if there's just a lot of other things that have got to be done before we even get to the point of even being able to make a thoughtful decision.
So this is kind of a horse before the cart type of situation. So they put in the application for the tree removal prior to the concept plan going before the planning commission. And Marnie Waffle is on the line from planning. And Marnie, do you have any comments to make to the commissioners' concern?
Yeah, this is one of those projects where we typically would want to come to the forest and beach to see what, if any, trees can be removed before we move on to planning commission with the site plan. We certainly can and, and will be going to the planning commission with a conceptual design. But if a, a number of these trees are not approved for removal, the site plan would need to be modified before we present it to planning commission.
Right. And, and I would say, Brian, you raise a good point. And it's one that we have struggled with. And there are many times when we have felt like the forest and beach commission should have been approached first, and we were not. And so I, I do think this is probably, for example, I mean, they're proposing to take out a redwood. And that might be great for their, the way they envision the site. But, but I think most of us would have a, an immediate reaction to the removal of a redwood, a mature redwood. So I, I, it is, but you're right. It is a very difficult thing to do. And I've looked at the site. I, I have to say, given the size of the site and the complexity of what they're talking about doing, I am probably more inclined to defer to the city forester's recommendation than I might be in another case. Because it's frankly something that is going to require a lot of thought. And I also think it's going to require, and I want to get a commitment from the city forester to this, that if a plan is adopted, she feels like she's got the resources to monitor it to make sure that as we go through this process, these trees will be protected and, and the site will be monitored, you know, not regularly, so that we make sure that they're observing. Because you're going to, you've got some trees, significant trees, that are going to be in close proximity to proposed structures and, and things like that. So I don't know if that answers some of your concerns, but I, I agree with you. It's a difficult thing to do.
Well, I'm, I'm just, so, so again, visiting the site, there were a couple of trees that I saw that were slated to be removed in agreement with the forester. And I, you know, it was a matured tree that was probably over... One of them, I think it's tree number four, I thought, that was to be removed. And I thought it was a nice acacia. That was a big tree. And really didn't make sense if we were going to take out a Monterey pine right next to it. It looked like, why would you take this one out? And I mean, and there could be other examples of that. It was a little difficult from the plan for me to walk around by myself and figure out what was going on there. One of the things I would ask is, because it's such a big plan, is, is that, as an example, I had a Monterey pine pulled off my property last year, and I had to replace it with two new Monterey pine, small Monterey pines. And it was a two-for-one deal. And I, and I, and I've, in other council meeting or other commission meetings, I've seen takes a tree out, they've got to replace it with a ratio of four to one, or two to one, or three to one. And I'm not quite sure I understand what that is with all the stuff that's going on with this project about, okay, so what's the replacement value of taking out, you know, four dead Monterey pines? Are they going to have to replace it with two or three new Monterey pine saplings or some other combination of other trees? And that was some of the, kind of the unknowns that I couldn't really dig into the plan. And it's such a big parcel with a lot of different things going on. There's an opportunity here to, to have some kind of, you know, constraint on the property owner to have to replace at a certain level if you're taking away X, Y, and Z. Does that, does that make sense, or am I getting...?
Yeah, it makes sense. I, I think the city forester would, may have a response, or at least some comments.
Yeah, since it is such a large area, I was looking at the recommended, recommended tree density table from the code. So I was looking, if you, if you looked at each individual of the eight parcels for single-family, they would be in that 0 to 4,000 square foot range, which would require three upper canopy trees and one lower canopy tree per parcel. So then, when we got to the resort side, since there were eight, I blew that up to mirror both sides. So currently, there would be 54 trees on the private parcel. And they're asking to remove 28. So per the approach that I took to the density recommendations, after replanting and the retention of the trees that we want to retain, then the full 16 parcels would end up with 113 trees total.
And all of the information is in, is on the agenda report under planting? So it kind of spells out exactly what she was just talking about.
But I think, Sarah, the question I would ask is, put it another way, when the project is completed, if, if, if your recommendation is adopted, will we, will we meet the city goal for, for tree density on these parcels?
I believe so. If, if you take the approach I'm proposing, the way the recommendation table stands is that any parcel over 8,000 square foot, the number of trees is as determined by the forest and beach commission. So since eight of the parcels would be merging into one for the hotel, in that case, you could choose a different number of trees that, other than what's outlined in the table. So it's, it would be so big, it would be at your discretion.
Okay. But, but what you're proposing would provide a yield that is pretty close to what if you just multiplied the number of original parcels?
Yeah, so if, yes. So right now, if, if we allowed them to remove the trees that I agree should be removed, then we're down to, they would have retained 26 trees. So we would be asking them to plant 87 new trees.
Okay. 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 And then, and then do you know, I mean, because I think Commissioner Sowers, his point about the acacia versus the Monterey pine, do you know which two trees he's talking about in particular?
Yeah, so in attachment number two, all of the trees are numbered. And the, I've summarized the readings from the worksheet that's used to determine significance or not. And if we're talking specifically about tree number four, which is an acacia, which has a DBH, a diameter breast height of 25 inches, per that worksheet, because it's not one of the desirous species and it's not an exemplar, example of its species, then it's rated as not significant. But there are some that would meet those criteria that are exemplar, examples of their species that I chose to rate as significant. So if those are, if there's some that I chose not to rate as significant that we want to visit, I could be open to that.
This is Brian. I mean, I, I just, I looked at number four. It would look really healthy and it was fairly large. It's an acacia, which we have a lot of acacias in Carmel, and we're trying to maintain a forest. I mean, it's probably, it was probably one of the healthy, I mean, there, there were a lot of sick trees on that property, even though you said they were kind of semi-healthy. A lot of the Monterey pines are dying, so I mean, it is what it is. But I mean, it seemed to be a healthy specimen tree, whether it's a, you know, the acacia is not a desired species. I can't speak to that. But it, it looked like a fairly sizable, healthy tree, so.
Yeah.
I have something I'd like to add. Anyone there?
Yes, I hear you.
Yes, Commissioner Burling.
Yeah, would it be possible, and, and I agree, it was very complicated. And I went around and looked at it and took notes and everything. But, and of course, it, it would help to have some idea of what, what they're planning to build just to be able to picture it. But could we have, with keeping our distance of six feet and masks, could we all go with Sarah, put this off a month and actually go and, and look at it like we... And this is a much more complicated location than we've had in the past. So could, could we put it off and have a group meeting where we're careful to follow the guidelines of masks and all that? And, and really go over it?
And, and the answer to your question is, of course, we can. And, and that absolutely could be the right thing to do. If there's any, I mean, first, if, if anyone else has any comment, but otherwise, Commissioner Burling, if, if, you know, I think that makes sense. You might want to make a motion. And I suspect it would be seconded. And, and that might be a very good thing, just to table it for a month, set up a time when we can. And if we can't all go together, maybe a couple of times when we could go with the city forester. And we will observe virtual distancing and, and wear masks. And, but that could be very beneficial to the decision-making in this process. So any other comments? We get a motion to that effect, or?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, just like you said it.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Hey, Mike, are we, are we supposed to be, I thought this was Sarah's presentation time, so we're supposed to listen to her?
Oh, that's a good point. Yeah. You're right. You're right.
We've got a whole process here to go through.
We also have to go through public comment. So Commissioner Burling, hold that motion.
Okay, we'll wait.
And I think, in not too long, not too distant future, you'll be able to make it. So any other questions to the city forester? Sure. Commissioner Mosley?
Brian, exactly what you were saying. So I was lucky enough to get ahold of Sarah at exactly the same time both of us had time to walk the property. And in, you know, in the past, we always walked as a commission and really were able to ask questions and see the property and have a much better understanding of this whole, you know, I'm in and out of my computer, it, you know, flakes on me. The Zoom thing is difficult, and it's difficult not being able to meet as a group. So I think that's a very important thing for us to do because Sarah answered so many questions for me, and I have a much better understanding of the whole property. And if we can all do that together, I think that'd be a great idea.
Okay. So let's, just as a matter of process, let's, are, are we now finished with the city forester? At least at this point, at this time? If no one has any further questions for the city forester, then I will, we, we will excuse, or not excuse, but, but we'll move on to public comment. Or if there's a, if there, I don't know if the owners of the property want to make a presentation. presentation or comments. Well, okay, so Commissioner Myers, do you have something further for the city forester?
I did. I just had one question. For Sarah, I know you brought Marnie into the conversation and again, I just, in understanding the process in which this development is being considered, this, this is a conceptual plan. Is that correct, Marnie? That these are drawings that have been brought to, that were brought to this city conceptually and it's been thus presented to our forester for her thoughts and then brought again then to us? Is that how this is happening? I just want to make sure I understand this topic.
Just real quick, Marnie, it's kind of, it's kind of both. So they submitted the removal application to receive a permit and they happened to submit a concept plan at kind of the same time. Marnie, would you say that's accurate?
So as far as the planning process goes, we, we actually started with a preliminary site assessment. And that's when planning and the forester go out and we look at the site context, we look at constraints, we look at trees. And so at this stage in the process, the architect has developed a project and it's far enough along in the design development phase for us to be able to do this sort of analysis. We haven't seen a full set of plans. The planning department hasn't done a full review of this project yet. What we're trying to do is just get a better understanding for, to what degree the project may or may not need to change before the applicant formally submits their design review application.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Anything further for either the city forester or the city planning director? Marnie, before we move on to, I don't know, again, if the owners of the property want to make any presentation or the members of the public? Anybody else for city forester or the planning director?
This is Brian again. Could I ask the planner a quick question?
Of course.
On that plan, you showed eight lots. And when I visited today, it looked like that there are only six lots and then there are two homes there. Are they going to demolish the two homes, eight?
So the, the, the standard city block contains 20 lots, 10 on each side. So there's 10 lots on Carpenter, 10 lots on Guadalupe. The four lots on the south end are not part of the project. So we're just working with the, the remaining 16.
Okay. Because it was a little, it was a little confusing because you look at the, at the plot map that you put out there, you've got the resort that's kind of cut off and then there are two lots beyond that. And when I looked at the property, you had the resort and the two lots were two homes that were sitting there versus the, kind of the resort vicinity. So it was a little confusing.
Uh huh.
So. Okay. Okay. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Marnie. Is there someone on the, on the call or in the meeting that wishes to speak on behalf of the developer, the architect? Anyone like that?
Yes. Eric Miller, I'm the architect. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
You're good. Okay. Yeah, so I'm on the phone, so it's a little, it's a little difficult. But so I think Sarah and Marnie did a very careful and thoughtful analysis of the site. And we were able to, based on our meeting at the site assessment, respond to most of the concerns they had. And so I also feel that all the comments that were made on all of the residential lots are something we can easily work with by adjusting the plan of the houses a little bit. And, and we can be consistent with everything that, that Sarah has asked for on those lots. And on the Carpenter Street side, where we're proposing the units, the only two trees that we would have a very, very difficult time accommodating are number 24 and number 25. I believe there are a tea tree and I think the other one's an acacia. But those two trees are in a position that make it very difficult because the, obviously, and everyone would agree with this, that beautiful redwood that we are saving really takes a big piece of the center of the lot out. And if we were to take 25 and 24 and keep those trees, that would make a very difficult financial burden and it, it might really be damaging to the project. So I'm hoping that we can figure out a way to remove 24 and 25, whether it's mitigation or contribution. So I'm hoping, so to make a long story short, we agree with everything. The only thing we're asking for is to be able to remove 24 and 25.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for the architect? Mr. Miller? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Oh, sorry. Commissioner Myers, go ahead.
Sorry. It's like I'm a delayed reaction of my hand. Sorry about that. Just to be clear, from the architect's perspective, so what the forester has made in her recommendation, you representing the developer, the owner of the property, you guys are in agreement with that outside the fact that 24 and 25 would sit in right in the middle of the development. Those are the two additional beyond what the recommendation of the forester. Is that correct?
The, the forester recommended keeping 24 and 25.
Right. Those are the ones.
Yeah. Those are the only two trees we have any concern about. The rest we can comply with.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. And it may be that that would be a, something we could look at onsite. Since we're kind of drilling down on that, is there anyone else who wants to speak on behalf of the developer in addition to Mr. Miller? Anyone else? Okay. Are there members of the public that would like to comment on this proposed plan? Is there anyone on the line from the public that has any comment? Okay. Given that, that's, public comment period is closed. We will now, it's now open for discussion by the commission. I think Commissioner Burling, can I, do you want to be recognized? Do you have a motion?
Well, yeah. The way we said it before, I don't know. Leslie, did you write it down before by chance?
Basically, you want to continue the project so that the commission has time to meet out there as a group or individually to tour the site with the city forester.
And, and I would, I would modify if, if it's all right, Commissioner Burling, table the motion for a month, take it up to the next meeting. And I would, I would, if, if possible, while these are fact-finding opportunities, it's not an opportunity for the commission to engage in deliberations. I think it would be beneficial if we, if we could do the tours of the site, hopefully all together, but if not all together, hopefully in no more than two instances so that we, we, I, I, because I benefit from hearing the questions, the factual questions asked to the city forester. And so I think that would be helpful if we, if we could do that. If you don't mind, Commissioner Burling?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. Okay. So that, that's my motion as Leslie is just adjusting it, right, Leslie?
Yes, I am.
Okay, good. Is there a second?
Okay.
Well, can I, can I interject before we move on this?
Sure.
I really feel like that we had an opportunity, we should have an opportunity for a discussion before we make this motion. I, I just want to make sure we all understand the, this exact process that's going on. I mean, of course, I imagine that all of us had gone to, have gone to this site and have toured it, whether or not we, we had an opportunity with our forester or not, this is part of our responsibilities. So I imagine that we've all gone to this site, we know what is on this site at this time. And if we were to approve what the forester is recommending, does that mean that, and I'm, maybe Sarah, you're going to have to jump back in and clarify, or maybe Bob, you could help us, but does this mean that the developer would come right in and start taking trees out immediately? Or does this just mean that what we're saying is, we approve of the, this process of these particular trees being removed and that it's going to go to plan and it still has to go through a whole bunch of other processes? Then most likely, at some point, it will come back to Sarah on her desk to look over. I, I just want to understand what we're, what we're going to delay for a month when reality, obviously, the developer and the architect, there's a whole bunch of other wheels in motion.
Yeah. So what I have right now is a permit application for removal of a number of trees. That, that's the only official thing that I believe is on the table right now. So it is my perception that the application for removal, they're presenting the map as a courtesy to show kind of why and where they want to remove the trees, but it's really, we're talking about the permit application for removal right now. Marnie, correct me if I'm wrong.
So that's the only formal application we've received. I, I would seek clarification on the timing of the removals because this is related to development. So am I correct in stating that no trees would be removed until after this project has been approved by the planning commission and gone through that, that entire approval process?
I could not make that assurance because there are four trees on the site now that are almost dead, that need to be removed in an interest of public safety. And I can't guarantee that the conditions of any of the other trees would degrade during the planning process and would also need to be removed. So there are at least four that need to be removed before the rest of the planning process and there could potentially be more based on factors beyond our control.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, guys. We have a motion pending. It has not been seconded. So is there a second for Commissioner Burling's motion, which it, I, I think, as I drill it down, would mean that we would have an opportunity to tour with the city forester. And I, my particular focus would be trees 24 and 25 and thinking about how that could be done. But I'm sure there would be other things if we're on the site with the city forester. Is there a second for the Commissioner Burling's motion?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion of the motion? I mean, Commissioner Myers, did you feel like you, you, that this would be unnecessary? Or I'm just curious?
Well, I just feel, why, I don't know. I might, if my, the clarification made by Sarah in that she can't guarantee once a permit's been issued, when the timing would be that they would start to take trees out, then for me, then it does make sense for all of us, from my perspective, to make sure we all are in agreement, or at least there's a, a majority for how this plan should be approved going forward.
Okay, good. Okay. Any further discussion before we vote? Okay. Ms. Fenton, would you?
I have one, I have one question. I have a question. So if we, we meet, we go forward and we give the, Sarah the ability to give them the permit to remove trees, what kind of, I don't know, I want to say guarantee, but what I would like to be able to say is, until they do make it through the planning process, I don't want to have us live for five or seven years if something goes wrong with a barren lot of that size. You know, if somebody goes in and takes out all those trees, they have a permit, but they haven't gone through planning or something goes wrong with planning or something goes crazy and we can't develop for a while and now Carmel's got a huge lot with removed trees.
Well, I think, I think the city forester and the public works director could correct me, but I think if we decide to table this, we go and do a, an inspection with the city forester and we come back next month and we make a decision, we could include the condition of that, that no trees be removed until final approval by the planning department, with the exception of trees that are in decline, which would need to be removed for, for reasons of public safety. So I think we could do that if we choose to do so.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Ms. Fenton, we poll the commission?
Burling?
Yes.
Kedell?
Yes.
Mosley?
Yes.
Myers?
Hi.
Sowers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask one question of Eric Miller, if he's still on the phone? This has nothing to do with the motion. I'm just trying to prepare for the next month.
Eric, are you on the phone?
On the phone.
It looks like he is. He's number 77. So if he stars sixes, he can unmute.
Eric Miller, if you could unmute yourself, please. Quick question, quick question to speed up the process a little. We'll call you tomorrow.
Can you hear now?
Yeah, here we go.
There, there, there we go. Yes, I'm, I'm here now.
One question I have for like, going, going forward, 24 and 25 is a problem for the design as certain, as currently proposed. Your design, you have the, the hotel is essentially like a box and then you have a rectangular driveway to the north, or to the top, actually, right?
Yeah, so that's correct, yes.
The parking lot length was cut in half and the parking was along Carpenter Street and the hotel was moved, shifted back more towards the, the west, make it more rectangular on the west. That way you would have the driveway closer to the, the street and then the hotel towards the back. I'm not a planner, I'm just thinking about it, just trying to save the trees. Has that been considered or could be considered?
Well, so, so the parking lot itself has units over it. And so moving the entrance into the parking lot, I think, would be an issue. Also, I'm trying to make a very small approach from Carpenter, so it feels more understated. And so we're going to try to soften the buildings from Carpenter and it helps us to put the parking, parking on the south side and have only one approach. 24 and 25, as you can see, are very much in the center. And the reason they make it difficult for us is, of course, everyone knows we have to save that beautiful redwood and you can see the, the 20-foot circle that is going to be required to save that. And so it really chops up that whole corner and wipes out two of the units, which makes it very difficult to, to build the project.
This is Bob. Let me ask, Eric, let me ask this a different way. Is there any way, shape or form you can redesign the hotel so that you can keep 24 and 25 in place? Is that a possibility? Has that been looked at?
We, we looked at this very carefully from the beginning to try to save as many trees as possible. And you can see for this big project, we're really not taking out that many trees, especially on the hotel site. And after, of course, we agreed to keep those trees on the residential site. So those trees are not pines or cypress or oaks. I believe it's a tea tree and an acacia. And so I, I'm hoping that somehow this commission can feel comfortable with allowing us to remove those two trees. Because it is a big, it's a big deal to us and it would be hard to go back, back to the drawing board because we really spent some time thinking about this and working with the developer to make sure it's economically feasible.
Okay. I, I hear you. Thank you for your, your answer.
Thank, thank you.
Okay, guys. Before we leave this topic, if I might, our next meeting is February 11th. And would it, would it, does it make sense to take a couple of minutes right now and see what the city forester's availability is? see what the city foresters availability is and try and nail down? Because, you know, I travel a fair amount and that sort of thing. When would be a good time for us to get together? If we can all do it together, it would be great. If we need to do it in a couple of of groups, that's okay. The earlier part of the week and let me throw a couple of dates out, maybe January 25, something like that, which is a Monday or even Tuesday, January 26th, or then the following week, February 1st or 2nd, something like that. I want to make sure we do it, though. Yes, city forester.
Looking at the calendar, I tried to trying to nail down the packet for the next meeting and have that finalized on February 4.
Okay.
You can give me a couple of days before then to finish up or change any reports or materials that you need. That would be much appreciated. So if we could do the week of the 25th, that would give me more time.
How does Monday, the 25th or Tuesday, the 26th work for people? Is that good or people in town? Is is that a conflict?
For me, either one would work.
Okay, Sarah, Commissioner Burling said okay. J C?
I prefer the 26.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Mosley?
What what time on the 26th?
I'd prefer the morning if that's possible.
Great, I can do the morning, no problem.
Okay, is that J C, is that all right with you? Okay, Commissioner Sowers?
Yeah, that works.
Do you think in the morning work for you?
Yes.
Okay, okay, good. Okay, so, you know, barring things can change, but otherwise, let's plan on touring the site together. Bring your mask and we'll do it on January 26, Tuesday, January 26 in the morning. You want to say 10 o'clock or does that work?
Yeah, fine with me and and we just would meet there.
Yes, yeah, we'll meet there. We will not go in the truck as we were as we did pre COVID. Now, you you will go to and from in your own vehicle and and we'll just meet and we'll maintain social distance and we'll be we'll be careful and safe.
Yeah. Let's meet on. Go ahead.
Oh, do you want to pick a spot?
I was gonna say let's meet on the Guadalupe side rather than the Carpenter side. Just, yeah.
Actually, if you park on First, if you go up Guadalupe and turn right on First, there's parking right on that little street. It's a little bit easier even than Guadalupe.
Okay, okay. Okay, good. All right, that's good. Thank you, and and I think that's a good plan. Next, we have several orders of business. First is the election of chairperson and vice chairperson for 2021. I this is my term expires this year. And so I think it would be wise to elect a new chairperson and the person on the commission that has the most seniority after myself is Commissioner Mosley. So I would nominate Commissioner Mosley for the position of chairperson. And I reached out to her and she's willing to do it. So if that's and I'm just making a nomination, so I don't get to appoint people, but I'm making a nomination and if and it's open for discussion.
I definitely would.
Sounds good to me.
Yep. Me too.
Okay, good. All right, Ms. Fenton, you want to poll the commission then for the appointment of or election of our chairperson?
Sure, but can we just have someone officially second because there was a lot of people talking?
I'll second it.
Okay, Commissioner Myers is seconded.
Okay. Burling.
Yes.
Kedell.
Yes.
Mosley.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sowers.
Yes.
Thank you, approved.
Okay, and then the election of the vice chairperson for 2021. I would nominate J C Myers for that position and Commissioner Burling came on at the same time, but I I have to say I have been impressed with the level of preparation of Commissioner Myers and the diligence that he's invested and I think he would make a good vice chairperson for 2021.
Same with me.
Okay. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Ms. Fenton, would you poll the commission?
Burling.
Yes.
Kedell.
Yes.
Mosley.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sowers.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, Commissioner Burling, I didn't mean to suggest that you don't prepare for the meetings.
That's okay.
I I just meant to say in a in a nice way that that my personal observation is that I think Commissioner Myers may prepare for these meetings more than than any of us, including myself. So I didn't mean to put you in.
No problem, no problem.
Okay. And I'll just finish out here and then I'll be done.
Mr. Former chairman, I guess. One more decision to make is when you would like to have this effective. It could be effective immediately or it could be effective at the beginning of the next meeting.
Oh, no, I think it's at the I think it's effective for the next meeting.
Is there consensus on that?
Yeah. Oh, is there?
I agree, yes.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's a common motion, but it's a question.
Yeah. Yeah, so after after the meeting adjourns this evening, my term as chairperson will be done. Okay, and our new chairperson and new vice chairperson will take over. Now, do we have the the city foresters' report for December?
Yes, let me pull up our fun graphs. All right. There we go. December has been a pretty slow month with the holidays, so we didn't have any notable failures in December. We continue to inventory our trees as we go along. There are some things I want to talk about that kind of bled into January that I'll include in writing in the next month's report. First, for December, we saw the first noticeable bloom of Armalaria, which is a root rotting fungus that's soilborne and it affects the the oaks. So it's able to the pathogen's able to enter into the root system of the tree and then basically digest the tissue of the roots, making the trees potentially unstable and susceptible to failure at the at the soil line. So it's it's fruiting right now. So you might see large clusters of tan mushrooms at the base of oak trees. A good example right now, hasn't been cleaned up already, is the intersection of Uniporo and Bridgewood, the northern intersection, but it would be the southeast corner. In the right of way, there's a grove of large oaks that have a rather large bloom of Armalaria. Most recently, we discovered dwarf mistletoe in some pines about Guadalupe and Fourth. That was rather surprising and not something that you typically find in a town. It's a naturally occurring parasitic plant that happens in forests. And so basically, the plant grows inside the vascular tissue of the tree and causes it to decline. It basically sucks the energy out of the tree. So we found it in four trees in that location and another tree close to Mission Trail Nature Preserve. So we're just trying to figure out right now what our management strategy is going to be. Speaking with some older staff, that infection has been known for quite a while and it had been pruned out in years past, but it was something that current staff just wasn't aware of until just last week. So that's something we're going to have to craft an approach to. We also had two notable things happen at the beginning of January. First off, behind Bruno's Market on a Saturday night, a large pine came in contact with a tree, a transmission wire and actually caught fire. So it sounds like there was a wound close to where the contact was made and there was exposed dry wood and the the fire entered into the heart of the tree. And the fire department was able to put it out, but on further inspection with their heat sensing camera, we were able to see that there was still heat further down into the tree from where it was extinguished. So it was possible that it could have reignited. So we had to make the decision just to go ahead and and remove the majority of the tree. There was also a cypress that fell on San Antonio just to the north of 11th for no apparent reason. There there wasn't anything glaring about this tree that would have caused it to fail. So we're still investigating that as we pull out the trunk, but it looks like it just the roots gave up and it fell over. So that those are two things that happened at the beginning of January I just wanted to bring up. Did not have any stop work orders in December and our friends at Carmel Cares are continuing with their projects with the addition of working at the tennis net situation at Forest Hill Park. Some of the nets are in a little bit bad shape because pickleball is two inches lower than tennis. And to adjust for pickleball, wires have been stretched out to hold the nets up. So they're helping us look for a solution or crank or something so that the tennis players and the pickleball players can have the net height that they both want without causing conflicts. So those are the highlights. So going through the the regular grass is normal. We continue to approve removal permits and we're still requiring planting, so not a lot happening in February, in December, which which is God. And our replanting numbers are still holding true. We still are seeming to be on trend to require more upper canopy trees be planted. And we have been doing re inspections on the trees that we've been requiring to be planted. The last couple that we looked at, there was two and the properties were still under construction, so the landscapes hadn't been installed. So there was nothing to enforce around requirements for planting just yet on those. So our regular work continues, again, December being pretty slow in terms of work, the majority again in inspections. And we rounded out the year pretty well. It looks like the trend for removals has been pretty consistent over the last handful of years, the same with pruning and the same happily with planting. So just today, we started our winter round of planting with our first five trees and then every week we'll do five to 10 more until we get up to our goal around 30 for this planting season. We may be able to do more depending on how the weather holds. So that's overall what what's been happening. Are there any questions or anything you would like to discuss?
But Sarah, what's the window on that planting season?
I'm really hoping to plant when it's supposed to be the rainy season. So into, I would say, maybe into the beginning of June. But again, it kind of depends on some of our workloads as well. We do have, I forgot to mention this, we do have pitch canker revving up in town again. So we have some larger pines going into decline. So some of our time might get diverted to dealing with some of those big removals. But yeah, so through what's supposed to be the wet season.
This is Brian, Sarah. I had a quick question for you.
Yeah.
I just because I had.
I think you accidentally.
Yeah, Brian, you.
I had a I had a Monterey pine removed last year and I really struggled as a resident to find available nurseries for for Monterey pines as well as I understood that there is someone has had put a rumor out that a particular nursery had created a pitch cancer pitch but pitch can canker resistant tree sapling and I wasn't able ever able to find I really had really struggled to find, you know, plantings for replacement and I it'd be really helpful to residents that have to replant if the city could provide a resource for them to go at to be able to get, you know, you know, the respective plantings and places to go. I really struggled finding it and and was really spending enormous amount of time just trying to find the resources. So it's just a suggestion that if the if the forest department could provide residents with whether it's nurseries or resources for replanting, it'd be really helpful that that if that was a resource for their for the residents in the future.
Yeah, I I agree. I too have struggled with finding Monterey pines of any sort of decent size. There's one gallons and five gallons on the market, so they're pretty small. And when I was asking the nurseryman why there weren't more and the answer was they haven't been propagating them because they've been struggling with pitch canker. So what we've first been doing is trying to germinate our own our own germ plasm, so basically our own local trees that may have some resistance and trying to grow those out and plant those, as well as working the middle school has also brought in some genetic material from further away that may have some resistance, but they're still small as well. So we have to figure out how to make the demand on the market for the nurseries to start growing more of them and getting creative. So I I hear your struggle because I'm having it as well.
Well, I just as a as a as a resource point, Tope's Tree Service now has their own nursery and they're providing the 15-gallon requirement. I was also led to believe, although I wasn't able to confirm it, that the Pebble Beach Company will provide Monterey pines free to any resident who wants to plant them on the property. So I don't know whether they're 15-gallon or they're small saplings or whatever, but they provide that as a free option for residents within the within the Del Monte Forest.
Yeah, I've heard that as well. I haven't been able to make contact with them, but I will say just for public disclosure, we have a staff member in the Tope family. So if we were to choose to purchase from Tope's nursery, we would need to be very fair and transparent and bid that out to multiple nurseries just so there wouldn't be a perception of of favoritism.
Well, and I'm not I'm not necessarily directing the city. I'm really more directing it to residents as a resource because when we're when a resident's required to replant, I struggled with finding the resource because I have a requirement to get it in the ground within 30 days. I can tell you right now, there's no way I could have even found it in 30 days.
This sounds like a great future agenda item. Can we stick to the report, though?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Sarah, I did have a question about the Armalaria and I read up a little bit about it and trying to understand how quickly we might expect it to spread and it seemed pretty vicious and nasty. What I know you said you're you're looking at what you're going to be doing for mitigation, but are you particularly concerned about this, especially since it's yet another attack on our oaks?
I am concerned about it because the oaks have been so stressed from previous drought cycles. And since we had just a little bit of moisture, all of the mushrooms popped up very quickly. So it seems like there's a heavy pressure of the inoculum in the soil and it moves from tree to tree. And so many of our oaks are planted so so close together, their root systems are intermingled, so it's able to transfer very easily. Also, in a location where there's irrigation under the oaks, so there's additional water that contributes too. So we really have to keep the root zones of the oaks dry during what's supposed to be the dry season to give them the best chance. It doesn't seem like there are many oaks that are very resistant to it. The best thing we can do is to keep the trees in the best health we can. So providing them with enough room to grow, so they have enough light, moisture and nutrients, and limiting impacts to the root zones. So it, it's going to be a struggle in coming years to keep the look of that pine oak woodland that we have in town, considering our malaria and the pitch canker and sudden oak death being in the county. So we're just going to have to be creative and see what we can't find that can be resistant or possibly find some sort of pesticide, fungicide that could help. But there's not a lot of work being done on it right now. In the academic community.
My, and my last comment, so I, I did read again, just in doing some research on it, that it can take an oak down pretty quickly. And so with that in mind, is, is this something that we as a commission would want to find a way to, to alert the community to at large, you know, so that they can consider it as well, because obviously you aren't able to go to every lot and see every oak tree and see it appear or not appear. So it's just food for thought in terms of something that we, we might want to figure out how to communicate to our, our residents.
That would be very helpful and that's one of the charges of the commission in, in the ordinance. So we could definitely work together to craft some sort of strategy to get the messaging out.
Great. Thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have the Public Works Director's report.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This will take a few minutes. Hopefully you got a chance to review the, the agenda packet and the attached report from Public Works as a whole. Part A, City Council actions related to the forestry parks and beach at the January 5th council meeting last week. First of all, they appointed Brian Sowers, as we well know, to the commission. Second is they accepted donations from Carmel Cares. There was 12 different items that were donated at value that's $86,000 over the past three months. So that was recognized and much appreciated. And the last thing is, as far as on the paper, lucky me, I got to present about the possibility of intermittent closures of Scenic Road from 8th down to 13th, or San Lucia. And it was split vote for, for to one to postpone the idea indefinitely. But the joke is on us all because the wastewater district is going to be putting in a sewer line down through there and traffic will be even worse. So interesting times. Climate Committee meets next, next Thursday, January 21st at 3:30. You're all encouraged to attend. The presentations from the Waste Management District and the Water Management District. And to be determined, PG&E, we're doing some presentations about their roles in climate change. Update on the volunteer organizations, I think we heard from Shirley, Shirley Moon earlier at Dale Byrne and as well as Sarah. Because of the COVID shelter in place, there has been less physical work out in the field. So they're kind of doing more what they can without being out in the field very often. So something to consider. But they've been really helpful miscellaneous parks and beach items. Sarah already talked about the new tree planting, so that's really the bane push for right now. And then last but not least, Commissioner Myers asked about the sand at the volleyball courts. The sand sloughs off, it's kicked off, the tides come in, it's washed off. And then there's sandstone and then we push the sand back. And after a while, it comes back and it's a, it's a recurring problem. Doesn't have a very many good solutions. So in my report, I kind of did a little history going back to the 60s where they used to use bulldozers and got to do it pre, pre coastal commission awareness days and before only environmental regulations took an effect. In the 1980s, they kind of, they were pushing sand along the sand, the beaches as a whole. Looking more of a holistic approach, which seemed to work for a while. But the last time we did that was 2015 and it cost $18,000 and almost $19,000. So the cost is just going higher and higher and higher and it's a recurring problem. So the last few years, what we've known is kind of called spot repairs where we have a, an employee in Public Works that can operate a, what's the word I'm looking for?
A skid steer or bobcat.
It's almost 4:30 for, okay. We have operator for a bobcat who's, we can rent the bobcat, you know, for $500 a day or so. Push the sand back, the sand's going to keep, the sand will keep eroding. Even if there was no people walking on it, which would be nice, the tides are still going to expose the sandstone. Permanent, in terms of a permanent solution, one would be to build like a wall, then the coastal commission will have us all executed at dawn. So we don't want to do that idea. The second is to excavate and chip down further down on the sandstone. What we could do, you could backfill with, with sand. So that could be an effective solution. But it might be a temporary solution because before long, the sea level rise and all that, the tides are going to come in. Wash it out, wash out the sand and then we'll have a big hole in the ground. So not too many great solutions for this. We are aware of it. There are other problems along the beach as a whole, like on the shoreline or the, you know, the rock revengements, the, the large recany walls. We have a bundle of problems along the shore of which the, the sandstone issue is but one of them. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, but that's kind of summary of where we are in this area.
I have a suggestion, Bob.
Sure.
Are you there? Yeah. So for us short people, the hedge that you have from a long scenic there when you're getting close to the Frank Lloyd Wright House is probably six feet high, which means that some of us can't see over it and see the view. And I wasn't aware of how much I was missing till some tall guy was taking a picture. And I could see on his phone what, what a good view it was. So could, could you guys have that be like a three and a half foot hedge instead of a six foot hedge?
Yes, we can within the city limits, not, not.
It is, it is. It's, it's on, it's on the scenic pathway before you get to the last stair, stairway.
Okay. Okay. Well, we'll talk to Shirley Moon about it tomorrow.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Hey Bob, I, I did have a question or two in regards to your comments about the dune that does go down from the Del Mar slash volleyball court site. We've had independently, when I'm speaking from the volleyball community, I suppose, the quasi-community that is, some geologists come and take a look at this site and propose a number of different solutions. But the temporary one that I, I brought up a couple of different times really is addressing the foot traffic that does go down and especially this, this last year with, with COVID, I think, and stay at home or or at least beach use, it really seems as if the, you know, this hill has taken severe beating. And I, and I know year after year, we see the sandstone does get exposed. That, that seems to be more of a wind generated issue, I think. But it seems particularly bad this year. And I, I know watching over and over again, people going up and down it. And is a temporary solution, could it be considered to do some sort of the rail system that's in place up in the other parts of the North Dune?
We have to, we have to meet the, the requirements of the North Dunes Master Plan, which, which includes a boardwalk or a, you know, walkway, a boardwalk, a boardwalk along that stretch, keeping people off the, you know, off the sand, the boardwalk. Properly engineered, that would certainly help. It's not the only solution. And in fact, we had potential funding for that. The city council decided to put $280,000 or maybe it was $180,000 of grant money into the Mission Hills Nature Preserve. But the runner up idea was to do that very boardwalk. So hopefully the next time we get a, a bunch of money, we can do that. Again, it's, it's part of the solution. It's not the permanent solution. And in terms, in terms of the cable railing, we'll take a look at that. But I just don't remember what's in the master plan.
Okay. And then your thoughts, because of the passage of the one and a half percent sales tax increase, that there's going to be some funding to potentially address, understanding obviously the beach has a number of pending issues. But I, I know and I'm kind of speaking perhaps, you know, out of, you know, stepping aside from my commission. But I certainly know that there's a way to, to raise some funds to help out in terms of some of the sand movement. I don't know if anyone on this call is part of the community that wants to speak to that. But anyway, we're here.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Uh, Bob, this is Brian. This beach sand thing is kind of one of the passions why I joined the Beach and Forest Commission. I struggle with is I know we, you've had the bobcat. I mean, it's really not a great solution because it can't stand the way a larger kind of situation can do. And in my view, the sand hill, especially Ocean Avenue sand is a branding issue for the city and maybe this is even a council issue. Because if you look at every picture of Carmel, people see the picture of Ocean Avenue white sand coming down to the beach.
Absolutely correct.
Probably half the year now, because of whether it's the wind, the erosion, the traffic, I mean, more people running down the hills now. That hill looks horrible. I mean, it's brown now. It's not even white sand anymore. And it's eroding both at the volleyball court and on Ocean Avenue. And it's really detracted from the city's branding as a, as a beautiful beach scene. And I think it's concerning and I think that JC's comment, you know, getting, if we have to, because there's no budget money, to get enough money in there to at least get a bulldozer type situation and move sand around. If that's a, because when they did it five years ago, it seemed to be in a lot better shape over a few years than bringing in a small cat in there and trying to move the sand around because it really looks horrible.
We admit we're doing band, yeah, we're doing Band-Aid repairs as opposed to.
And that's because of funding?
I'm sorry?
It's because of funding?
In large part, yeah.
Well, I don't, I don't know. There's, I don't know. That's just my two cents on it. And I don't know if there's a way to, to bring it up, whether it's through the pine cone or.
We are, we are.
Carmel Cares and Val's in this because they seem to have a good funding, way to get funding source to, to get some contributions to do something.
I'd like to talk to them, sure. We're all aware of it. We're all.
Okay, guys. Thank you. Any, any other questions for the Public Works Director? Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Do we have, that concludes our business. Do we have any future agenda items? We've talked about a couple of things. Is, is there something that people want to specifically put on the agenda for a future consideration or action?
Excuse me, Mike. This is Raimi Allard with Friends of Carmel Forest.
Hey, Raimi.
I, I'm sorry. It seems like there's a, there's not an opportunity for me to chime in about what's going on with us. And I, since you're asking the question, maybe in the future, there could be a spot for me just to say a couple of words, whether it's in the reports section. I don't feel like I want to take time at the beginning of the, of the meeting and the public comments to, to say, you know, what's been going on. I don't know if that is the time, then I would do that. But I want to respond to the foresters report and make a couple of other comments. So I just want to, I want to be in order and do it at the proper time.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I think you, you should, if it's, if it's something where you simply want to make a report, that probably is appropriate during the period for public appearance at the beginning. Since it's not something that would require action from the commission. But if you wish to comment with respect to either the City Foresters Report or the Public Works Director, I, I don't know. The good thing is I don't have to worry about it after tonight. It'll be somebody else's problem. So I will say today, as of right now, you've got several minutes. Go for it.
I'm not, okay, I'm just going to take a couple. Thank you. And I'm sorry to see you go, but I think JC is going to do a great job as well.
Mr. Mo will be our chairperson, so, but go ahead.
Oh, okay. Sarah, is Sarah still on the call?
Yes, she is.
Sarah, the forester?
Yes. Both Saras are on.
Okay, Sarah, I, I'm just curious if we could somehow be reported on the number of trees that were permitted, that were part of the permitting process for removals and replanting. If we could know monthly how many of those that were replanted. For instance, the 2020 report says 91 trees are required to be planted. Is, is anyone keeping track of, and I know we will in the future, but is anyone keeping track of how many of those trees are getting planted?
Yes, I think we, I think we didn't get you on a meeting when we talked about that. But I have scheduled monthly check-ins to see if the trees are getting planted the way that they're required to. And since that meeting, I believe it was the November, December meeting, as a commission, they decided that they're supportive of moving forward with us enforcing the law for replanting. So if trees aren't replanted, it's a $250 citation that can then be moved into a misdemeanor.
Yeah, no, I was at that meeting and I heard all that. But I was just curious if we could know, because we have your city removals and plantings noted. If we could know how much planting is being done by the private sector.
Yeah, we definitely can. And I think we, the first big batch that we went looking for was in December. So I can put together a summary of that each month as well as any citation action that we've moved to.
Okay. And then, so I don't have to, and I can, but I was just wondering if you could put a column in your report that says what Carmel, Friends of Carmel Forest has planted. So that it adds into the totals of the trees being planted.
Yes.
Okay. We have finished our planting for 40 trees in Forest Theater. We had a donation a couple of years ago and we just planted our 40th tree on that donation. So we're really happy about that. But okay, I will, in the future, I will chime in at the beginning for my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Raimi. Thanks for everything that Friends of the Carmel Forest do, so.
Thanks.
Okay, guys. Going back, are there any future agenda items that we've identified that we, someone wants placed on the agenda for the next meeting?
Well, Mike, I think it would make sense to put on our future agenda something that, that helps us communicate with, and we've been talking about this and it doesn't seem like we haven't done anything actionable, but how we communicate with our residents about some of the things in the forest that in Beach that are important. And, you know, I know we get, the reports take place, people can watch the, these video conferences, et cetera. But it would seem to me that it would be, it's our responsibility anyway to, to find ways to communicate important things to our community. And perhaps we can discuss in, as a future agenda item, though, what those vehicles are and, and what we. what we can do to be actionable.
Yeah, and I mean, along those lines, I agree with you. Let's have a future agenda item. I think sometimes the timing of our meetings is unfortunate because it is difficult for the Pine Cone since it is published and comes out late Thursday night, early Friday morning, and our meetings are on Thursday afternoon. I think sometimes that's a an avenue of outreach that we are not as effective with as we might be. So I think it's a good topic. So we'll add that to a future meeting.
Just just so I get everything together for that future meeting, would you like a presentation about what a messaging platform is, so then we could splinter off into a working group to populate a messaging platform?
Yes. Sounds good. Okay, anything else? If not, then thank you, guys. And once again, I appreciate everybody's patience and courtesy while we're struggling with this. It will be nice to be back in council chambers, which I'm I'm sure we will be at some point. It's just not moving as quickly as I think we would all like, but we'll get there. So thank you and have a great rest of the evening.
Thanks, Rob. You are good as the commissioner, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Bye.